Good evening. I am Jane Callahan, a member of the League of Women Voters Rochester. I would like to welcome all of you tonight, the candidates, the audience, and those viewing at a later time, to this forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters Rochester. We'd also like to thank our generous partners of tonight's forum, the Rochester Post Bulletin, the Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce, and the Rochester Public Library for their help. Due to the current pandemic, we are limiting attendees to the candidates and necessary volunteers. Guidelines for social distancing and the wearing of masks are also being followed. The League of Women Voters is a volunteer organization structured at the local, state, and national level to encourage citizens to participate in government. While we, as a league, do study and take stands on issues, we never endorse or support political parties or candidates. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates themselves, not those of League of Women Voters Rochester or any partner or sponsor of this forum, and the sponsorship of the forum is not an endorsement of any candidate. It is our purpose in sponsoring this forum to provide you with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss, face to face, issues that are important to you. Tonight's questions have come from LWV Rochester, the Post Bulletin, the Chamber of Commerce, and members of the public. As there is never enough time to cover all the issues in a limited time and setting such as this, please feel free to contact the candidates' campaign headquarters directly if your questions are not addressed tonight. We'd like to thank all the candidates for running for office, for offering to serve their community, and for the enormous time, dedication, and commitment that running and serving demand. We encourage our members as individuals, as we encourage all citizens, to get involved in your community and the political party of your choice. Welcome to tonight's forum, which features the candidates for Rochester City Council Ward Number Four. Candidates for this seat are Kelly Rae Kirkpatrick and Katrina Pullum. Each candidate will have two minutes to offer an opening statement. The candidates will then respond in turn to questions provided by LWV Rochester, this evening's partners, and by the public, which were submitted in advance. Candidates will have 75 seconds each to answer. The candidates will then have two minutes to make a closing statement. I would like to suggest to candidates, let me you make your answers as succinct as possible. It isn't necessary to use the entire time for your answer, but please finish your sentence when your time is up. We would like to cover as many questions as possible. Each candidate also has three 30-second rebuttal cards. These can be used at any point after each candidate has answered the question. Only one rebuttal card may be used per question. Please put the card in the basket after you have used it. The timekeeper tonight is League of Women Voter Rochester member Amy Cockett. Questions from the public were checked to ensure they follow our guidelines by LWV Rochester members Maggie Brima-John, Jane Callahan, Deb Duffy-Smet, and Kathy Swessel. Asking questions will be Randy Peterson from the Post Bulletin and Sam Gill from the Chamber of Commerce. By random choice, candidate Kirkpatrick will begin with her opening statement. Candidate Kirkpatrick.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening. I appreciate sponsorship from LWV, Post Bulletin, and Rochester Chamber of Commerce, and I appreciate viewers chiming in to learn all you can about your candidates for this year's election. We are in a pandemic. We are suffering through one of the largest economic crises that we have had in our state in a very long time. Hard decisions will need to be made as we move forward, experiencing what's going to continue to happen with our residents and our businesses as we move through wintertime. I bring a strong service background and experience set of collaborative problem-solving and decision-making to the table. We need to bring our diverse voices together. We have significant gaps in opportunity, equity, and quality of life in Rochester right now, and I seek to right those wrongs with your collaboration, with your communication, to make things better for all. I love serving my community. I've been the Eastside Neighborhood President for two years. I've pulled together numerous projects with various partners throughout the city, agencies, and organizations. I sit on boards, both local and county-wide. Without strong economic recovery for all, our community cannot become more inclusive and offer sustainable quality of life for Rochester citizens, and that's why I'm running. I listen to people, I get things done, and I have a heart. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, candidate Pullum.
Hello. My name is Katrina Pullum. I was born and raised just outside of town in Casson. My family's been in the area since the 1800s, and my grandparents still live on our family's multi-generation farm just outside of town. I am a wife, a mom, a stepmom to a family of all boys. I am a small business owner in town who directly understands the issues that our small business community are facing today, and let me tell you, they need our help. community are facing today, and let me tell you, they need our help ASAP. Before my husband and I started our own business, I spent most of my career in the banking and finance fields, and I understand budgets, profit and loss statements, and I can analyze a lot of data fast. 400 pages of numbers and grids does not scare me, and I am ready to make sure that we are number one, spending appropriately for today, and number two, spending within our means. Today, it is so important to have voices of all of our city heard. That includes businesses and our younger generations, and if elected, I will be the youngest council member at age 36 and the only brick-and-mortar small business owner represented on our city council. I do not just talk about ideas. I get out and actually make a difference within our community. I have met with a lot of people in our community. I work with and support numerous nonprofits. I work with ACRIS Kids, and I'm currently helping some girls start a small business and teach them what it takes to be a small business owner. I've spent two years working with homeless children. I recently have been invited to be a part of the Jeremiah Project Propel program for emerging leaders, and I just recently received the endorsement from the North Central State's Regional Council of Carpenters Union. I am a fighter. I work incredibly hard, and I will make sure that we get back to using common sense and start holding people accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question goes to candidate Pullum first, and it comes from the public. How does the Rochester community make sure we never have a George Floyd incident?
We just need to communicate and work together. Building relationships, building trust between law enforcement and citizens is crucial. Police Chief Franklin has done a great job of already moving steps forward. I was actually out last night was our National Night Out, which is a great program to bring people and police together. People just need to know people's names. They need to know who the officer is next door. I've talked to people in those communities that are more at risk and asked them what they thought and what they needed to make sure that that doesn't happen here, because they don't want it to happen here either, and they don't want that what's happened up in the cities to come to Rochester. And their suggestions and their advice was that we find ways for people to get to know the police officers in a more calm and friendly way, so they know their name and they know who it is that's coming to their door, and they know that they're safe and that they're protected.
Thank you. Candidate Kirkpatrick.
Thank you. Unfortunately, we've already had an incident very, very similar to George Floyd's homicide. His name was Albert Dashow. Although labeled a homicide due to the carotid restraint that the Rochester Police Department performed in the Cub parking lot in the spring of 2019, this was not an incident that propelled such specific racist and terrorist and riot activity in our community as happened in the cities. I commend Chief Franklin highly. I commend Sheriff Torquerson for the ability that they have had to reach out to our community to make sure that they are outreach and working with various neighborhoods and communities by implementing the policies that they've been implementing. Chief Franklin does a commendable job with all of his staff, and I'm looking forward to the huge improvements being made to our Rochester Police Department just by the fact that he's interested and he brings a strong skill set to make positive change for all in this community involving law enforcement and public safety.
Thank you. The next question comes from the League of Women Voters, and it goes first to candidate Kirkpatrick. Do you feel the city too often hires outside consultants? Is this a symptom of under-hiring needed staff?
That's a good two-part question. Yes, I feel that the city does tend to over-hire outside consultants. I think we have a very creative, innovative, talented pool of workers here that can be utilized to benefit our community for the developments that are done, whether it be DMC or otherwise. However, do we have staff that can fill that position? I'm not sure. I don't know if it would be staff with DMC, staff with Mayo, or staff within a particular development agency, but we really need to look at that kind of added-on-the-top consultant fees that really keep our city's budget higher and may slow down the whole process of getting things done that we need done in our community.
Thank you. Candidate Pullum.
Absolutely. We overspend on consultants. That is somewhere that the city definitely needs to take a look at right now, and outside consultants aren't needed on everything that we do. We have, like Kelly had said, a lot of very talented people here within our community that would offer help, that we don't even have to necessarily pay. For instance, DMC spends over $50 million on consultants, and that's a lot of money, and that's a lot of money going elsewhere that I would like to see stay here in town locally, and maybe we can actually help those that are here.
Thank you. The next question comes from Randy Peterson of the Rochester Post Bulletin.
State DMC funds have been earmarked to start a study regarding a potential Sixth Street Bridge over the South Fork of the Zumba River. Do you support the effort and why?
This goes to candidate Pullum first.
Currently, my answer is no, because as a Ward Four representative, I would represent the people of Ward Four, and when I listen to the people of Ward Four, they do not support the Sixth Street Bridge. And for that reason, they believe it would bring in too much traffic onto Sixth Street and into their neighborhoods that they're not currently experiencing, and they would not like to see that kind of traffic. They have asked that the Sixth Street Bridge be restructured into a pedestrian-only bridge and that they're more able to accept, but the added traffic. Last night, I also sat through the Small Area Development Planning Committee Zoom call, and on there, it was even mentioned that maybe if they do do the full Sixth Street Bridge with cars and pedestrians and bicycles being able to cross it, that they're somehow that they would try to limit the traffic flow by minimizing the full, all-the-way-through plan that was put forth. So we'll watch it, and we'll see what happens, but as of right now, the current Sunnydale and Slatterly Park residents are not for it, and so I would not.
Thank you. Candidate Kirkpatrick.
Thank you. I'm very happy that Ms. Pullum has changed her mind on that. At the last WSESAP plan, she had said yes, she supported the Sixth Street Bridge, but the Sunnyside and the Slatterly Park neighbors do not need increased traffic. Although their traffic is similar to what we experience on the east side on Center Street, opening up that Sixth Street traffic would really be detrimental until a further study is done on where we need the traffic to go. As suggested, a pedestrian bridge or an all-electric bridge, perhaps one way for routing the circulator would be advantageous, but there's other streets that we can enter through the Sunnyside and the Slatterly Park neighborhood. Perhaps coming through a route at Nine and a Half or 10th Street would be advantageous, but the point is, is we can't make decisions on bringing added transportation into a neighborhood until we really assess the, you know, almost 61-acre property and really decide what needs to be done in a sustainable, resilient manner to support housing and our economy and the people.
Thank you. The next question comes from Sam Gill of the Chamber of Commerce. It goes to candidate Kirkpatrick first.
How would you evaluate the effectiveness of the current city economic relief programs funded by CARES Act dollars? What additional measures should the city implement to support local small businesses?
The CARES Act dollars are a great feature to pull up our economy during the pandemic. One way to assess the effectiveness is to look at numbers at the end, pull some statistics, and understand how they were utilized, breakdown, using the RDA's women and minority businesses, understanding that those monies that go to propel those businesses, that they've actually been effective at promoting minority and not necessarily women-owned businesses over any other, that there is an equitable disbursement of funds based on employees hired, regular yearly sales, expenses, square footage of building space, square footage of land owned by property owners, et cetera. There's many numerous ways that you can gauge the effectiveness of the CARES Act funding, and we just need to keep working together and having open communication to understand how we're all doing in the economy and know when to disperse more funds or ask for more funds.
Candidate Pullum.
CARES Act funds, this is something I watch incredibly closely, and just on Monday, the new update came out on where a lot of the funds have been spent and where they're still planning on spending funds. Has it been used effectively? Absolutely not. In no way has the funds been used effectively to help those with COVID relief. For instance, part of the funds have been used for rebuilding facility modifications, for investments in city buildings. I don't believe this worth $275,000 of COVID relief funds. Also, website updates, improving and increasing network security for our county, or for our city. I don't believe that those are adequate resources. On top of it, some of these funds, the one good thing that has been done is the RPU, that's actually helped over 300 business owners. That is the only thing that out of all of this has helped the majority of business owners in our economy right now and within Rochester that need help. So no, these funds have not been used appropriately, and no, they are not truly supporting our economy and helping small businesses within our community like they should be.
I see we have a rebuttal. 30 seconds.
Although you've received $25,000 in funding for your Air Insanity, which would be a drop in the bucket.
From the county.
Yep, through the county. I think another way that we could approach this is perhaps doing a rebate on commercial taxes for businesses. It's another way to address, an effective way to minimize the outgoing costs for businesses that are really struggling right now.
I'll throw out my rebuttal then, too. So, yes, the county has done one program that has been successful, yes, and they have helped quite a few, and they're actually doing a round two of that same county grant. So the county is doing a round two, and they're actually going to be able to help more. The city, the city's $8 million is what we are talking about, and that has not helped enough people, and it has not gotten to small business owners.
Thank you. We'll move to a new question, this one from the public, and it goes first to candidate Kirkpatrick. How should Rochester ensure financing for quality-of-life items such as library, parks, theater, art, and music?
I think a referendum is really the way to go. City Council voted in favor of a referendum because they really wanted to hear what the people said, and that's really what it's all about. The people need to decide what they want in this community and how we can go about doing it. I had originally said that park funding should come from sales taxes, because then we share equally across the spectrum, not just through property taxes for those that own property, but the time constraints on throwing that up to the state for legislation would take too long, and we all need to understand what we value the most and what we want in our own community. So offering referendums and levies to the public to vote on is a really excellent way to understand that voices are heard and that we can ensure we have in our community what it is that we need to have.
Thank you. Candidate Pullum.
Can you repeat the question for me?
Yes. How should Rochester ensure financing for quality-of-life items such as library, parks, theater, art, and music?
Yeah, we can put together referendums, and we can do a lot of those same tactics. The hard part is, is the referendums are designed to get you to yes, no matter what. There is a firm hired that puts together the wording and helps create these referendums, and they're to get you to yes. So more than likely, the referendum that is being brought forward right now for parks and rec, we don't know, the hard part for me is you don't know where the funds are being spent, and I think if we want to put out referendums and we want to do things that are going to ask for people's support, that we're actually getting what the people want, we're actually getting out and talking to them, or somehow we have to reach out better, we have to find out what the community wants and needs, and we need to hear from them. We need to try to just make resources more available. A referendum is nice, but it's already kind of predetermined, and it's already kind of, you're already set the agenda, and we're not really hearing from the people what they want. We're basically telling them what they need, and I think that we need to find a better way, find a new solution, work together, and somehow let them speak.
Thank you. The next question is from the League of Women Voters, to candidate Pullum first. How do you plan to involve your constituents, Rochester youth, and neighborhood associations to inform your decision-making?
Yeah, same thing. Right now, we've all kind of picked up a lot of new technology. Zoom has been great. A couple people have actually brought forward the idea of creating even an app that people could follow through, and whenever there was updates or something in your, you could sign up for it, and whenever there was updates or something that was happening within your ward, whether it be a poll that needed to be made, or important information, or something that you could have public input on, that you would be able to, you know, get that information and log in and cast your vote, communicate, get up-to-date information on anything happening in your ward, and I think that's a fabulous idea. What it would take to put it all together, I don't exactly know yet, but it was brought up that that was something that a few different other candidates and people on our city council have looked at previously, and I think that's a fabulous idea. Other than that, it's just outreach. It's talking to people. It's getting out there. Our youth, I work with, I employ over 40 to 45 youth. I speak with them daily, and I think everybody wants to be heard, and they just want you to come to them and not expect everybody to come to you all the time.
Thank you. Candidate Kirkpatrick.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
How do you plan to involve your constituents, Rochester youth, and neighborhood associations to inform your decision-making?
Well, I'm a big advocate of neighborhood associations and a big shout-out to our neighbors for doing the phenomenal job that they do. Renee Hollesey is just a wonderful human being and just really pulling up the city and our residents to just get involved more in their communities. Polco is a wonderful, wonderful survey tool that the city uses, and I applaud the city for their last survey that they put out last week. They actually did it in four different languages. They had reached out to me earlier to try and give feedback on which languages were most prevalent in the city. Our schools speak 16 different languages, so having that available to those who are non-English reading or non-English speaking, because they haven't learned our language yet, is very important. Apps that we have on our cellphones would be really helpful as well. So continued outreach that we have and just educating that there is two-way communication available instead of just single, one-way communication by our agencies and organizations is really, really key. The voices of the people do need to be heard, and they deserve to give feedback on what's coming forward.
Thank you. The next question comes from the Rochester Post Bulletin.
Following a speed limit evaluation, Rochester Public Works has developed a proposal to establish 20 mile-an-hour speed limits as a base for residential streets, with the ability to make individual adjustments as warranted. Do you support lowering the state standard on residential streets from 30 miles per hour to 20 miles per hour in Rochester?
Representative, candidate Kirkpatrick.
Thank you. I support our streets being safe for everyone, whether it's aged or young, whether they're pedestrian-using, or whether they use mobility devices, a car, or a bicycle. And all neighborhoods throughout the city are very different. We have a lot of extra traffic in the downtown core, where we have a lot more quiet streets out in our more suburban or outside of the downtown core areas. Not all city streets need to go to the same speed. The added expense of putting signs up needs to be acknowledged, so we need to understand the data that's behind the slower speeds, which is sound data. Slower speeds save lives. It would make for a much safer community, especially since we have such a high aging demographic here. So I'm all for slower speeds, but we need to make sure that we're putting it in effectively, and we need to ensure that the implementation is going right where it needs to go, and that, of course, would require community feedback.
Candidate Pullum.
Yeah, this is one that we pretty much agree on. I agree, same thing. I don't think it's something across the board that it should be every street needs to be this way, because a lot of streets are different and we all function differently, but I don't disagree that, you know, our children play, a lot of us put out slowdown signs and things like that already on certain streets. It wouldn't be horrible, but we do need to look at the cost, the expense, the policing. Who's going to enforce it? You know, are we going to have people calling constantly because people are going a little bit over, or are we going to put up signs? What's the cost of these signs? Which streets are we putting them on? Just need to look into it a little bit more and find out how it's going to function for our city, but yes, obviously slowing people down is important on a lot of streets. Our kids play in it. We have kids that set up bike ramps in our We have kids that set up bike ramps in our street, and if you're not going slow, you don't know what you might come across when it starts getting a little dark. So, definitely not, not against slowing down on certain streets.
Thank you. The next question from the Chamber of Commerce goes to candidate Pullum first.
Even before the COVID pandemic, Rochester small businesses were faced with rising costs. Now, as many of these businesses look to recover from the pandemic, it is crucial that the city work with these organizations to promote a climate that is conducive to recovery. As a member of the city council, what steps would you take to support these businesses and reduce the cost of doing business in Rochester?
Well, I would start with what just happened last week. Businesses that are downtown, last week just received a letter from RDA that their taxes, they're going to be getting a service fee of 8% on top of everything else that they're trying to do right now. They've been hit with, you know, already a slowing downtown economy, and then the shutdowns, and then construction. On top of it, you know, most of them are restaurants and bars. So, COVID has been hard to get people back down there. Mayo's pulled people out of work so they're not seeing the traffic that they're used to because Mayo employees are not down there right now. And then, on top of it, last week, RDA put out a letter. They're going to hold a meeting, and it sounds like an 8% fee is going to be added. And that's the one thing, I would not be adding that right now. There has to be other ways if they need funds. They shouldn't be imposing it right back onto the businesses. That seems to be what everyone keeps doing, is just keep throwing things on top of them. And they've, I think, at their, at their wits' end right now and at the limit that they can take. And we need to just reach out and start working together. And they would all be happy to sit down and offer their advice and tell you their stories, and we just need to learn to listen.
Thank you. Candidate Kirkpatrick.
It's really unfortunate that there was miscommunication between the city and RDA, and the letter was sent out. Of the 153 businesses that will be affected, over half of them are going to see an 8% increase, which only really amounts to about $20 per year. And the policy is that the rate increase goes up between 4 and 8% a year. This year, property values escalated 11%. So, the RDA is understanding that they cannot violate their policy and go higher than 8%. Of those 153 businesses, I already said that 80 of them will see a $20 increase, but 50 of those are exempt from the raise, the rate raised because they, they are ineligible, they do not meet the guidelines. 20 of those, these are significantly larger than the other businesses. We're looking at something like the Hilton at the corner of Center Street and Broadway, or perhaps the Indigo Hotel at the corner of Third Street and Broadway. They will see significant increases in which they have to pay. I again mentioned that one way that we might effectively help our businesses would be a rebate on the commercial taxes, and that's something that could be looked at.
Thank you. The next question comes from the public. It goes first to candidate Kirkpatrick. There is a growing movement in Rochester to adopt ranked choice voting for city council and mayoral races. Do you support ranked choice voting? Why or why not?
I support ranked choice voting. It would have been interesting to see what would have happened in the primary. I came through with 49.3% of the vote, which was very shocking. And if we would have been utilizing the ranked choice voting model, I wonder if I would have received 51%, and then we wouldn't have had a general election. I'm not necessarily for that. I think that would have been a shock to the public. It would have certainly been a shock to me. I appreciate the support that I've had in this election. However, we need to have as many voices as possible. I really appreciated the fact that Ward 6 saw six candidates stepping up to offer their services to the city as a councilperson. And it was, it was down to two, Mr. Ougland and Ms. Dennis. So, ranked choice voting definitely has its place. I applaud the city council for approving that, I believe it was in March. And I think moving forward, that legislation will be going to the state and will understand how the, how the voters respond to that. So, we, we'll see where it goes in the future.
Thank you. Candidate Pullum.
Yeah, I agree. It would have made a lot of things in this specific election different. There was six in one ward, four in ours, and could it have changed the outcome? It possibly could have. The part with ranked choice voting is there's a lot of moving parts to ranked choice voting and a lot of things that are different. Understanding it is complicated, and I think just making sure that if we switch to that option, that people understand it. We just need to make sure that people are informed and that people understand what it means either way and how you work, work through either process and what, what they mean. Because a lot of people still haven't even heard the words ranked choice voting, so they don't understand what that is. So, I think we need to educate people more. And yes, we will see what happens as it moves through legislature, and then we'll, we'll learn a little bit more as we go.
Thank you. The next question is from the League of Women Voters. How do you feel, and it goes first to candidate Pullum. How do you feel Mayo parking issues should best be addressed? Mayo parking issues.
That's a tough one. That's actually a lot of parts. Right now, I think things need to be reassessed. We need to work with Mayo and find out really what their plans are for the future. Do they plan on keeping, you know, most of the people that are working from home right now? Do they plan on keeping them home? Do they plan on bringing them back? Do they plan on bringing them back part-time, full-time? You know, what's the traffic going to look like downtown? What do we need for parking downtown moving forward now? What, what they've done and with their at-home programs, on a business standpoint, I'm sorry, I'm hitting my mic. On a business standpoint, it doesn't make sense to bring everybody back because that saves you a lot of money not having that overhead. So, I don't know if they will even be bringing back most of people, or if this at-home model is going to stick. And if that does, parking issues are going to change a little bit in how we structure. Rapid transit system is, is in place, and that's going to be, it sounds like, moving forward for the most part. At least the one section is, the west section. The south one is on hold temporarily, so we'll see what happens there. But yes, we, I think it just needs to be readdressed, and we need to find out what Mayo's plan is so we can actually address what parking needs are going to need to be met.
Thank you. Candidate Kirkpatrick.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Oh, here we go. Sorry. How do you feel Mayo parking issues should best be addressed?
I believe that Mayo parking issues should be addressed statistically and with data. Obviously, there's a pandemic. The, the telecommuting that's happening right now has forced Mayo and many other organizations in the city to kind of recalculate their needs, recalculate how they're going to be moving forward. And this is going to affect parking in our, in our certain areas that are designated for parking in the city that we have right now. So, until we can actually get a handle on what the pandemic is going to be doing to our commuters, to the employees that work in the downtown core and that come in through various sections of southeast Minnesota, I think we need to put that on hold. And I have no doubt that Mayo and also the DMC have been gathering data since the beginning of this started, and they're assessing the situation. And I trust to reach out, that they will reach out, and we will understand the best way to go forward on, on parking and parking ramps.
Thank you. The next question comes from the Post Bulletin.
What, if any, incentives would you support to encourage property owners to maintain and restore designated historic buildings in the city?
Candidate Kirkpatrick.
Historic preservation is really important. The nationally recognized Pill Hill area in our historic southwest section of town is, has been really paramount in bringing a neighborhood together and upholding a sense of aesthetic and heritage and culture that, that came, that came as our city grew. However, the national landmark recognition does not preserve architectural features or buildings. The owners have the right to demolish when they are ready. Having that badge of honor in the southwest section of town is, is really something that the residents are proud of. I think we need to bring that forward to the downtown area. Having a historical preservation ordinance on a local level actually can preserve our architectural heritage and the cultural heritage that we bring forward. If the residents and the business owners downtown could see it as a badge of honor, something to be proud of, something that our community can be proud of, I think it's going to go over far better than what the approach has been thus far.
Candidate Pullum.
So, this is something Mark Bilderbach, the incumbent, or current council member, this is something he has fought pretty hard for. And I've talked to him quite a bit about what he thinks is holding it up and what types of programs we need to put in place to really help preserve our historic buildings because they are important. They are a part of Rochester's history. It's what gives us our Rochester, you know, uniqueness, I guess you can say. All these brand-new buildings, we kind of lose who we are every time a new one goes up a little bit. So, I think we need to find a way to preserve them. But we also need to recognize that those buildings are owned by people. When they become historic listed, it, it is harder to do a lot of the improvements that you would need to do to those buildings because a lot of them do need improving and creating incentive programs. I don't know exactly which programs we would need to create, but we definitely need to find a solution, and we need to talk with owners, we need to talk with the Historical Society, and we need to find a plan. And I know that a lot of people are already working on this. They meet pretty regularly and are trying to find solutions. And I think just keep talking, keep working together, and we will get to a solution.
Thank you. The next question is from the Chamber of Commerce.
According to the most recent numbers, Rochester MSA unemployment is sitting at just over 8%. What steps should the city take to support these job seekers and help put our community back to work?
Candidate Pullum.
Help get businesses open. And businesses are open, we can hire employees, and we can get people back to work. That's a pretty easy circle of life right now. It is hard because businesses can't afford to have employees. And so, we've had a huge job loss. Even in my business, we've had a huge job loss. We've had to let a manager go, which I would love to have her back. We've lost probably 20% of our staff just because we don't have the hours to get them anymore. So, it, it's been a trickle effect. It's trickled down. You know, the shutdowns have hurt a lot of people, and, and we need to just get, we need to get jobs back in town. We need, we've lost AMPI, we lost Seneca, we lost Kemp's. That's over 300-plus jobs in our town, and we didn't do a lot to keep them here. So, we need to get those people back, or at least the ones that are here do, do things to help keep them here, incentivize in some way to keep those jobs here because jobs, more jobs, better way of life, better living. And then, we need to work on our affordable housing, of course, too.
Candidate Kirkpatrick.
Thank you. We have such significant disruptions in our supply chain right now. The pandemic, we are, we are in uncharted territory economically. Our unemployment rate has almost doubled since the pandemic started. It's an unfortunate fact of what we're going through right now. When residents don't have enough money to support our local businesses, local businesses cannot thrive. When local businesses can't thrive, they cannot employ those who need jobs. We need to wrap our heads around innovative thinking. Mayor Norton really, really supports cottage industries, businesses that can emerge from the home. If we, if, if we talk to each other and we look at what our needs are, various needs throughout, different neighborhoods throughout the city, I think there's a lot of people that can bridge that gap to create ways to earn wages, to earn an income, although much lower than what they would have experienced having a full-time job from a business that may have closed. But we need to wrap our heads around creative ways to incentivize employment or incentivize income earning in the community right now.
Thank you. The next question? Did you answer the question, candidate?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, that's what I thought. Sorry, you were looking at me, and I thought.
We both, yeah, we both just answered the question.
Good. The next question from the public is for candidate Kirkpatrick first. What is your opinion of the DMC Destination Medical Center Plan and its effect on the city of Rochester? Would you like to see changes in the plan?
Yes, I would like to see changes in the plan. DMC is not viewed as something that's really great in our community right now. I just sat in on a really great webinar today, Dollars and Cents, how, how we can, how we can proceed with development in the community that DMC held. And it is amazing the impact that we have in our community for the city to earn money through, through taxes and just incentivizing the income. DMC has done a phenomenal job with that. I actually wrote a policy brief on DMC when the legislation was being written back in fall of 2014. And one of the evaluations that came out with the legislation that was going through before DMC was fully written was that there was going to be a discrepancy in economic outfall from the community and that various communities were going to suffer because there would be too much promotion in the downtown core. I'm hopeful that their next five-year plan is going to address those changes. I'm hopeful that they're going to reach out to the residents, incorporate some of their good deeds into incorporating housing and the development areas, and increase that spatial awareness of going vertically to increase our, our income throughout the city.
Candidate Pullum.
Will you repeat the question quick for me, please?
It's the DMC question. Here it is, from the public. What is your opinion of the DMC Destination Medical Center Plan and its effect on the city of Rochester? Would you like to see changes in the plan?
Yes, absolutely. I would like to see changes in the plan. I think when you get out and you talk to the community, everybody is kind of lost touch with, with DMC right now. Its focus has been so much on the core, and a lot of people would like to see it work, at least for everybody in the community. And what I mean by that is they have the, the tools to drive new business and to drive things downtown. But for some reason, we're only focusing on a lot of, you know, right, next month, they break ground on Discovery Square 2. Well, Discovery Square 2, everybody says is going to be great, it's going to bring people downtown, and people are going to love it. But the reality of it is, there's nothing apart, that is a part of Discovery 2 that is going to bring a single person to downtown. So, I think we need to start thinking outside the box. What's going to help our downtown recover? What types of businesses and what types of things can we do to actually bring people back downtown? Because that's really what downtown needs right now. We need to start thinking about how we're going to get people to start wanting to come back town. What's going to bring people from outside of communities and other places to want to go down there, to spend their money, to shop, to visit the restaurants, to stop into Eagle Drug again? What do we need to do to bring them down? We need to create, think outside of the box, and we need to create businesses and models and, and, and help revive a lot of downtown right now.
Thank you. The next question is from the League of Women Voters. It goes to candidate Pullum first. This past winter, the city, in cooperation with county and nonprofit agencies, provided shelter and services for people who are homeless. Is there a role for the city in this issue going forward?
Absolutely, there is a role. We need to do something more permanent. There is a building actually that the county owns that is right over by RCTC that I think is a fabulous location. We need to find a building that we can actually have resources all in there. Instead of just shoving, we can't just put them into, find a building every year, that we'll just work temporarily and throw them into the building. On Monday, actually, very disheartening, but $400,000 of our CARE Act funds is actually supposed to go, is going to homelessness. And they are actually proposing to remove the firemen from Silver Lake Fire Hall, and that's where they're going to put our, our homeless population through the winter. On top of it, that building needs over $900,000 worth of improvement, and they're going to spend $400,000 out of our CARE Act funds for those improvements, already knowing that that's not enough money. So, what's going to happen? They're going to come back and say, well, we spent 400 of CARES Act money, that's for COVID relief, on this restructuring of this building that needs to be done, improvements, and then they're going to need another $300,000 or more from the city after that. I think it's a band-aid again. It's a temporary fix. We're not, we're not coming up with solutions, and we need to find a more permanent solution.
Thank you. Candidate Kirkpatrick.
Yes, we need to do something permanent for the unsheltered residents of our city. Currently, the symptom band-aiding is not working, and we need to address this from a multifactorial level to ensure that we can end homelessness in our city. The onus really does fall on the HRA and the county, and I think they've actually been doing a phenomenal job. The 105 North Broadway residence is awaiting grant funding to ensure that they can perhaps lease to those residents that have moved in over the course of the last two months and ensure permanent housing for many of the folks that are there. The Salvation Army is working hard to go through their two core downtown facilities to maintain and promote the services that they used to have. And we need to make sure that where we house our And we need to make sure that where we house our unsheltered, the permanent plan is close to services. Many of them don't have vehicles or access to vehicles, and moving them too far away from our downtown five-block radius is going to make their lives far more difficult. So ensuring added communication between the HRA, the county, and the city will ensure we can end homelessness permanently.
Thank you. The next question comes from Randy Peterson.
Rochester's Community Vision Statement leads with stating that it's a city that cares. What does that mean to you?
Candidate Kirkpatrick.
Thank you. What that means is that the city applauds its residents, it applauds its businesses, it applauds its visitors, and they want to do what they can to ensure that everyone is happy here and that the city can meet their needs. That cannot happen if they don't have direct feedback, a two-way communication between all of those that I just mentioned, the businesses, the residents, and the visitors to our city. That's, in fact, the job of the city, to make sure that that infrastructure is maintained and upheld for people. We care through various ways of sustainability. We care about our environment, we care about the people, and we care about our economy. All of those three things need to be addressed equally, the triad for sustainable and resiliency. And if that can't happen, we're not going to be able to go forward and be a caring city or a city of health.
Candidate Pullum.
So the city cares, and I think that the city cares means that we care about all people. We care about our businesses, we care about people from every walk of life, the rich, the poor, our developers, our builders. We care about everybody. I think one of the things that has, for some reason, fallen short lately is that we've started breaking bridges within our community, and we need to find ways to rebuild them, to start bringing people back together. Our builders and developers are being ran out of town, and our businesses don't feel like their voices are being heard right now. To care means that you listen, that you communicate, that you talk, that you're willing to listen to all people from all walks of life, no matter where they come from or what their views are, and that you at least take the time to be there and to hear their voices. One of the other aspects of all of this is transparency. Caring means that you, if you care about the people, that you allow them to have a voice and that you are transparent. And in the time of COVID, we have become very comfortable with moving things very, very fast, and I don't think that we're being as transparent, and we need to remember that we need to be transparent, and we need to care about the people, and we need to make sure that their voices are heard and that we allow community input.
The next question is from Sam Gill for candidate Pullum first.
As a member of the city council, how will you prioritize local transportation projects? What steps will you take to help mitigate the disruption these projects will cause on local residents and businesses?
So if we're talking about rapid, the rapid bus transit, that needs to be relooked at a little bit. We need to look and make sure that we're still to date, that it all makes sense for what's happening in our economy today. Same with thing with Mayo. Most of the people that were going to be on those and that it was going to be, shuttling was for Mayo, workers and patients, we just need to make sure that still makes sense today. When I talk to people throughout our ward, when it comes to transportation, transportation is a huge issue across the board, but they feel like the bus routes aren't adequate, they're not coming into the areas that they need them the most, and most importantly, they're not running on the hours that people who need and rely on bus transportation, most of them work night shifts and work late into the evenings, and the buses aren't running late enough for them to actually get to and from work and to where they need to go. So I think we need to, once again, listen to the people in the community, the people who are actually needing the bus system and the transit system is supposed to work for, and find out what they need and how we can better provide transit for them.
Thank you. Candidate Kirkpatrick.
Thank you. We need to increase our two-way communication, as I've mentioned before. When we work on projects within the city, whether they're transportation-oriented or otherwise, we need to make sure that the intention of the project is understood by the people that are moving about during the construction phase. Extensions can't be done without real, real impact on the community if they don't know about it. It's really difficult to increase public transit without funding. How are we going to provide rapid transit to those who need it when we don't have an economy that can support something like that? We need to look really hard at what's going to be needed for our transit system in the future, and we need to understand the best way to meet all residents' needs that can best benefit from rapid transit in our city. Moving to an electric mode is going to be far better for a city that cares and a city of health. And I'm just, I'm hoping that the project that we're thinking about for rapid transit can go through in a portion that supports ridership, but doesn't necessarily go over the top with funding to implement large buildings and everything that we may not need in the future.
Thank you for your answer. The next question is from the public, goes to candidate Kirkpatrick first. What is your position regarding the odd-even parking restrictions versus using a snow emergency declaration when warranted for snow removal?
Well, our core neighborhood, Eastside, was actually, we did a study a couple of years ago, and we implemented it, Public Works implemented it this last year. And it's a lot of confusion, but I think in the end, we got it to work. I appreciated the fact, as many of the residents of Rochester did, appreciated the fact that grace period where vehicles would not be ticketed. I've spoken with neighbors that have had to call the police department, however, and the police departments had to get out there and measure across the street to make sure that there's enough width between snowplows to be able to ensure safe passage of vehicles. So any policies that get implemented regarding parking or residential areas need to be well-received through adequate communication of the city, and I think Public Works did a really great job at that this year. We promoted it through our Neighborhood Association. I showed videos, I posted on Nextdoor and on our Facebook site. Although I think we just need to get used to it, it can really, really help in those winter days when we do have snow to help the vehicles pass on those really tight streets that were designed for cars much smaller than what we drive today.
Thank you. Candidate Pullum.
Yeah, I'm going to echo a lot of what Kelly said here. It comes down to a lot of communication, too. It's understanding and people fully understanding what is actually happening and what it means. Yes, Public Works has done a good job communicating and getting that out there. In some streets, it's really hard to get through, and we need to find solutions like this, and we need to work together as a community. Snow removal is an issue, and the plows, you know, kudos to every single person that gets out there and drives a plow because it is hard work, and we need to make sure that we're doing things to give them space, too, and that cars and plows can be on the same roads and that we can all function together.
Thank you. And the next question will have to be our last question. It's from the League of Women Voters, and it goes to candidate Pullum first. Do you support increased funding for 125 Live for our seniors?
Yeah, so 125 Live does an amazing job. I don't even think it's just for our seniors anymore. They've actually came to me even for my business, and we've wanted to put together some different programs. They reach out to so many people. I think that they are so much more than what people even fully understand. They're not just for seniors anymore. They're actually running a program for children right now, too, and doing distance learning inside of 125 Live. So yes, they're really helping the community and really doing a lot of different programs right now, and I think that we need to support right now, especially with kids needing to do distance learning and having nowhere to go. We need to find more programs for youth and for our kids and for our elderly. They need things to keep them moving and keep their brains moving, and right now, we're kind of living a sheltered life. So 125 Live has been a savior and a, that safe place for a lot of our elderly to go and to just connect and talk. It's way more than just an exercise facility. So absolutely, I think they're doing a wonderful job there, especially right now through this pandemic.
Candidate Kirkpatrick.
Thank you. 125 Live has been a really great asset to our community, and I understand that there's been, you know, a fair amount of people that don't think it was a good idea and others that did think it's been phenomenal. The assets that they bring to the community as far as artwork, cultural extracurricular education, and activities for health, biking, outdoor exercising, concerts, they've been really paramount in promoting some really innovative ideas this summer to kind of get us through this pandemic. Where is the funding going to come from? That's really the key. I really don't believe that in an economic situation like we have that we should be spending. When you don't have money, you don't spend it. I believe we should really be following more of a holding pattern fiscally instead of being a little adventurous with funding. But to promote more of what they do would be really advantageous to this community, and I think they've done a phenomenal job at reaching out to all age groups and demographics to do what they were intended to do with the city.
Thank you, candidates. This concludes the question portion of our forum, so now we move to closing statements. And speaking first with a closing statement is candidate Katrina Pullum.
Well, thank you, everyone, for watching today, and thank you, guys, for hosting this and for the great questions. Closing, I'd just like to say, the path that we're on today, it really doesn't match the vision that Rochester had put forward. To get back on the right path, we need change, we need fresh, new ideas, we need innovative thinking and a diverse council to create a city that works together. We have forgotten to listen to our citizens and instead try to push agendas through city council fast and without community input. And it's happening now more than ever because COVID has made it easier and less transparent. And those in our community have no idea where their funds are going, how their tax dollars are being spent, and we need to find new solutions. Funds were given to the city to help with COVID relief, and very little has actually been able to help small business owners within our community. So I am here. I am paying attention and with detail to everything that is happening and trying to fight for and help those that are needing help the most right now. Every single person in government has told business owners that they need to pivot, rethink, and adjust for a new normal. So to find it, I find it incredibly confusing to why we have not, as a city, considered this, because it is a business itself, and we need to adjust and pivot. Some are getting raises, they are hiring and creating new jobs. Everyone can read the new 2021 budget, and you will see buying new equipment out of CARES Act funds and acting as if our economy is doing great. Well, I'm here to tell you that it is not, and businesses are not okay. On top of this, we have a major housing shortage, and our developers are being pushed out of town. We need to start working together to find solutions and tackle this shortage ASAP. We need to be able to build affordable homes and help people reach homeownership. I truly believe we just need to stop, refocus, and really start working on transparency and community input. We have a lot of hard work and tough decisions in the next few years, and I know that I am the right person for the job. I will work hard, and I will ask the hard questions, and I will make sure that we are listening to our neighbors, and I will fight to revive southeast Rochester. If you would like more information on me, you can go to pullumforcouncil.com.
Thank you. And now for the other closing statements. Candidate Kelly Rae Kirkpatrick.
Thank you. I'm a dedicated community leader. I believe in servant leadership, and I've been working on serving our community for a couple of years now, doing various tasks, sitting on boards for the city and county organizations. I've been an independent design contractor for 23 years here in the city. I can't work full-time year-round because of our weather. I understand the economic difficulties that we are all going through because I've experienced it yearly for decades. I understand when income prevents us from doing the things we want, or even worse, doing the things that we need. I put myself through college and graduate school while navigating some pretty difficult situations in my life. Rochester is going to continue to transition through our pandemic. We have equity disparities and significant changes occurring with city staff. We're in for some big changes when the new year strikes. The next Ward Four City Council representative will need to hit the ground running. I mentored with Mark Bilderbach. We actually both have the same graduate degree, leadership. I am the candidate to see us through this transition and to help make Rochester more caring and more healthy, more sustainable and resilient. Your support that you showed me in the primary, I understand, and I thank you for that. Your belief in me is crucial so that I can continue doing what I've been doing for Rochester over the last couple of years, advocating for policies and projects that make Ward Four and all of Rochester better for all of us. Please vote so I can represent your voice. I listen to people, I get things done, and I have a heart. You can visit my website at kellyforcouncil.org.
This concludes our forum. I would like to thank each of the candidates for participating tonight. Thank you for your service to the community and for your willingness to participate in the democratic process by running for office. I would like to remind you, the voters, that the views expressed in the forum tonight were those of the candidates, not those of LWV Rochester or any partner or sponsor of the forum. Thanks to our partners, the Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce, the Rochester Post Bulletin, and the Rochester Public Library. Remember that Election Day is November 3, and that early voting has already started. If you have voted by absentee ballot and would like to change your ballot based on what you learned tonight, visit minvotes.org, that's M-N-V-O-T-E-S.org, for more information on the process. Please remember to vote. If you have a question about your polling place or you would like to see your sample ballot, visit vote411.org, that's V-O-T-E-411.org. To see this forum again, access the forums from the Rochester Public Library website. Good night, everybody.